District by student population. The forty-five day enrollment, that means the number of students that are enrolled on the forty-fifth of school. And the very last definition to all the withdrawal codes, which means why students withdraw from our school district. On the first year, the forty-five day enrollment and also followed by the one thirty-five day enrollment, which is. Uh, important to how we not only receive funding, but also how we allocate uh, student populations for our schools into school district. The first year, uh, in the, in the, in the pink uh, highlight are the forty-five day enrollments for. Uh, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, sixteen thousand three hundred and sixteen students for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. In the blue highlight, we see the forty-five day enrollment for twenty-four, twenty-five and sixteen thousand and fifty-three students. And also for this school year is fifteen thousand six hundred and twenty-one. I will share, uh, these are verified every year in November. Uh, we have not verified the state department yet, our enrollments for this year, so that number fifteen thousand six twenty-one. It may fluctuate once we verify that enrollment with the state department, which comes up in a, in a few days. Uh, we want to also highlight and brief, uh, the one thirty-five day enrollment for uh, two years, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, sixteen thousand six oh five. For twenty-four, twenty-five's last school year is fifteen thousand eight forty-one. The question that we may have at this time is asking where do, do those students go? So I'll share more information at this time about withdrawal patterns and some of those trends for our school district. I'll start to my immediate, um, right here, the public, um, category there, we have. A total of again, four hundred and thirty-two students who left between the forty-fifth day last year and the forty-fifth day this year. So again, think about the forty-fifth day of school last year and the forty-fifth of school this year. About four hundred and thirty-two students left our school district. What that means is students coming and going throughout the course of the year, that number landed on four hundred and thirty-two. To your, uh, the, the orange, uh, category here, I'll start with the public. What that means are the students who left our school district and went to another public school beyond our school district. So that could be somewhere in South Carolina or some, in some other state. With a total of two hundred and thirty-seven students at a percent of fifty-four percent for that category there. If you move around toward the bottom, uh, the private school. That means students who left our school district went to a private school beyond our school district. Uh, that number is seventeen, uh, that percentage is four point five. The next category, uh, that yellow section there, students who withdrew. Those are twelve students, uh, two point eight. Those are students who came to our school and communicate they're leaving where they're gonna leave our district, but we don't know where they actually went. No paperwork was received from that receiving school district, but they left our school district through our withdrawal process. The next category here is a light blue category. Uh, twenty-six students left our school for homeschool, a percent of six percent. Those students who actually left went to a homeschool organization to enroll in a homeschool, uh, beyond our school district. The next category is forty-seven students at charter, went to charter school. That percentage is eleven. Those are kids who went to a charter school both in our district and also beyond our school district as well. The category here in the dark blue, status unknown. Those students who left our district, we don't know where those students are, they, they were enrolled with us at some part in the school year. Those typically are students who were removed for a ten-day drop. Uh, those are categorized, categorized usually as students who are dropouts in our school district. A total of sixty-five of those students for a percent of fifteen point one. And the last category is our no-shows. Students who were enrolled in our school district before school started, uh, could have been in June or July. But they never started school at all, they were dropped at the eleventh day. That number is twenty-eight and it's six point five. It's just a brief, uh, diagram that shows you just the forty-five day enrollment from two years ago, twenty-three. Twenty-four through twenty-four, twenty-five. And then lastly for twenty-five, twenty-six, these category trends are shows for the most part. A lot of our kids are not leaving in droves, however, what you see here, the majority percent are at the elementary level. And so this shows you, uh, what students left, what schools here. If you look at the chart at the very bottom, uh, sixteen thousand three sixteen was a forty-five day report two years ago. And this year is fifteen thousand six twenty-one. That's all I have for you tonight, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
I don't believe there are.
Oh, um, I just. Just a quick question about the Palmetto School, they are listed on the chart. Um, and they count towards their numbers because we sponsor them as a, as, as a charter school, right?
Yes.
When, this is a, just a quick question, um, when students transfer from. Like a cherry park to a Palmetto school, does that count against our enrollment numbers or does that still stay? As far as Rock Hill School District students?
It still stays as, as our enrollment, uh, with our school district.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Do, I have a couple of questions, on the slide that showed all the schools. You slid in there and they existed, did you say the majority were leaving? In elementary, is that where we find our students?
Just a brief dive into the percent by level and, uh, since the kids were leaving. Uh, the majority of our national trends also, kids usually leave at the elementary level, so that aligns to national trends. But the majority by percent by level is leaving at the elementary level versus middle and high school.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then the slide before, those unknowns.
Yes.
Um, couple of questions. The status unknown in the withdrew, the difference is the fact that somebody came informally said they're withdrawing, they just didn't give the forwarding.
Correct, so if dude comes in to a school and says, I'm gonna withdraw, uh, next week, and so they fill out the paperwork to withdraw. But the records for requests at their receiving school would never request it to us. Uh, the category of status unknown are kids who actually were sitting in a seat, uh, last week. And ten days later, they are not there, at the eleventh day, they're dropped from our school district.
And this may not be a question for you, maybe for Dr. Elder, but what impact does that have other than our funding? Are there further impacts for when we don't know the status of the student? When we don't know where they go?
Yes, sir, I mentioned earlier, there's one, the status unknown that particularly, uh, impacts our dropout, uh, rate, also our graduation rate. So those students are not found, uh, that counts against our graduation rate. So there's efforts that we, you know, employ to find those students when they leave, and so that's, uh, that impacts both the graduation rate and also. The dropout rate, those kids are not found.
Sorry, I missed that, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Connor. What, you have to help me understand this, why, like for instance, Evanport. Two years ago, they were four fifty-nine. Now they're four ninety-four, Evanport is growing. Sullivan. Growing, wh- why, why do we have a problem at some schools but not other schools?
I can't answer that question, we don't collect data on why parents are leaving school districts. I mentioned earlier, the data that we're required to collect is where do they actually go? So we don't have any processes to collect that data. However, uh, we've been in conversations with an organization, uh, that has family engagement that can research the information for us. As a matter of fact, myself and Dr. Smith was on the phone this afternoon. To potentially look at, uh, why parents leave the school district, and so we could collect that data. Uh, but we have not had a formalized process for that, so to answer the question. Why are students or parents leaving a particular school? There's no process for us that we're required to collect that information from the state department.
Wh- what, do, do you see any differences in the culture at the schools that? Wh- what, what can we, what can we take from the schools that are keeping and retaining their kids? How can we take that and put that into other schools so that we try to stop this? Cause this is not sustainable to lose three, four hundred kids a, a year.
As I've said, I think one, one thing we have to do is collect the real data that would show that. I mentioned earlier about the company that can provide that research for us, uh. I will say just some national norms and briefing, whether we align to those or not. You know, there are a couple of reasons that if you look at the research that talks about maybe why, we can't speak for us today, but certainly there are several reasons. One, uh, in particular that as parents left during the COVID era, they looked at more maybe options for them. And so those are different reasons why we could collect it, but again, right now, we don't have any information to share, uh, we don't collect that data.
I hope that we, I hope that we get it, and I'm just, I'm not trying to be difficult, I, I just, I mean, I mentioned. The schools that are in my district that I know kids that go to the elementary schools in Mount Gallant. At Evanport and at India Hook. And Evanport's right across the street from me, India Hook is my neighborhood. But, you know, when I talk to my neighbors, say, what is going on with India Hook, they say, well, it's actually, it's great. You know, they, so I'm not, I don't know what the answer is, I don't know why. And I don't, when I look in the neighborhoods that are around me, I don't see this like sudden. I don't see a bunch of for sale signs, and I don't see kids moving out or moving in. So I just, I don't, I don't know, but clearly, some of these schools are not losing kids while others are. And what can we take from the schools that are not and then put that into the schools that, that are, are losing kids?
Again, I, I think, you know, that information that we could collect on that, just the school itself, as we talked with the company as, as early as today. Several variables that could play into that, it could be the dynamic of parents leaving for job opportunities. Uh, it could be for a number of reasons, so again, to identify just the school itself could be one variable. But of course, you know, we are looking at trying to gather the information from this research-based company. Uh, we have another call with them on next Monday to talk about, you know, getting that information particularly. Uh, we could add the information to early as December, so again, through communication with the company now that they provide information for us.
And I, and I think it'd be helpful if, you know, if, if, I don't know how often you go into the schools or. Other people go in there, but I mean, if I'm in the military and I'm, if I'm the brigade judge advocate and I'm working with the brigade commander. We've got a problem with that battalion, I can go to a battalion, I could see that. The culture of this battalion is very different than the culture of the other battalion, so what can we do to fix it? And, and I think we don't need to hire somebody to tell us what's wrong, I think we can just go in there and, and look around. And see what's going on and to try to, to try to fix this. That's all I'm gonna say.
Okay. Well then, I say thank you, Dr. Connor, and I'm going to welcome up, uh, Mr. Barnes for a quarterly financial update.
Thank you, Board Chair Miller, Vice Chair Hutchinson, members of the Board of Trustees and Dr. Elder. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm pleased to present the first quarter financial report for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. This report provides an overview of our current financial position, key revenue and expenditure trends. And insights into how we're tracking against our budget. This report reflects financial activity through the end of the first quarter. Covering the period from July first through September thirtieth of the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Schedule that you'll see for the general fund compares spending for the same time period in the prior year. Allowing us to evaluate trends and identify any significant changes or emerging patterns in revenue and expenditures. Let's take a look at how our first quarter of this fiscal year compares to the same period last year. This table compares the budget ver- versus actual results for the first quarter of two fiscal years. The prior year twenty-four, twenty-five and the current year twenty-five, twenty-six. It shows how much revenue and expenditures have occurred relative to the total budget, giving a snapshot of performance early in the year. I'll start at the top with local revenues. Property taxes, both years show about six percent collected in the first quarter, which is expected since most property tax revenue arrives later in the fiscal year. Slight growth in the budget from sixty-nine point six million to seventy-three point five million. Countywide property taxes is a similar story, seven percent collected both years. Budget up slightly from eight point nine million to nine million. Fees in lieu of taxes, down from one percent collected last year to nearly zero, zero percent this year. These fees typically come later in the year. Interest earnings decreased slightly, fifty-eight percent of budget last year versus fifty-one percent this year. Still strong, reflecting good returns, but a little lower compared to last year. Other local sources down from thirty-six percent to twenty percent, this is due to timing differences in collections and smaller fees. Now moving to state funding, which makes up the majority of revenues. State aid to classrooms, twenty-five percent collected in both years, which is closely on track with quarterly expectations. Budget increased by about three point seven million from last year. The budget increase came from the senate projections for our state aid to classrooms. Bus driver salaries and workers' comp, four percent collected both years, which is consistent. Retiree insurance, PIB credit, twenty percent collected both years, consistent and on schedule. State property tax reimbursement, no funds received yet either year, but these are typically distributed later in the year. Other state sources down from eleven percent to five percent, mostly due to timing differences. One-time use of funds, large prior year item fifteen point eight million, that's not repeating this year. Only one million budgeted in twenty-five, twenty-six, a significant drop is expected for one-time funding. Our total revenues about thirteen percent of the annual budget collected in both years. Revenues are tracking similarly to last year, with small timing differences across categories. Next, we look at spending. Salaries are eighteen pers- spent, eighteen percent spent in both years, very consistent and on pace with expectations. While the percentage looks low for a typical quarter, please know that employees who are on a teacher's scale are paid from August through July. So the July paychecks for teachers are accrued back into the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. We have a slightly lower overall budget this year, one forty-five million versus hundred and forty-eight million. Our benefits are nineteen percent last year and twenty percent this year, almost identical. Which reflects stable employment levels and increased benefit costs. Our purchased services are higher proportion this year, forty-eight percent spend versus thirty-eight percent last year. Indicates some contract and service payments occurred earlier in the year than usual. Supplies and equipment, twenty-two percent versus twenty-one percent, which is consistent. And other fees, expenditures and transfers, slightly higher this year, but still within normal first quarter patterns. Our total expenditures are nineteen percent last year versus twenty percent this year, nearly identical, spending is tracking as expected. Both years showing net, net income for the first quarter for twenty-four, twenty-five, fifteen point eight six million. And twenty-five, twenty-six, fifteen point three four million. This is typical for quarter one, since major revenues like property taxes haven't been received yet, while payroll and operations continue throughout the year. Revenues and expenditures are closely aligned year over year. And we expect revenues to catch up in quarter two and quarter three, especially as property tax payments arrive. These charts show the monthly trend of our general fund balance over the course of the fiscal year. As you can see, we start the year in July with a balance of around fifty-two million. Over the next several months, the balance gradually declines, reaching a low point of about twenty-two million in November. This is primarily because we're covering our operating expenses without receiving major revenue inflows during that period. Then in December and January, we see a sharp increase. This reflects the arrival of local property tax revenues, which make up a significant portion of our annual funding. At its peak, the balance goes above eighty million in January. From there, we be- begin drawing down again as expenditures continue throughout the spring, and the year ends in June. Back around fifty-two million, right where we started. This pattern is normal and consistent from year to year and illustrates the seasonal cash flow cycle that school districts typically experience. Board, board policy DFAC states that the district will maintain an unassigned general fund balance for the year ending June thirtieth. Of a maximum or a minimum of seventeen percent and a maximum of twenty-five percent of the subsequent year's total budget. Budget expenditures in the general fund. This slide highlights the impact of the state's forty-five day and hundred and thirty-five day enrollment adjustment process on our district's funding. In fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, Rock Hill Schools was initially allocated ninety-one point seven million in state funding. However, after the hundred and thirty-five day adjustment, which reflects actual enrollment figures. The allocation was reduced by seven hundred and eighty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars, bringing the total down to ninety point nine million. Similarly, in the current fiscal year, we were initially projected to receive ninety-four point six million, but that amount was revised downward. Resulting in our current allocation of ninety-three point eight million. While year-over-year funding appears relatively stable, these mid-year adjustments demonstrate how even small shifts in enrollment or weighting can significantly impact our revenue. The challenges that staffing and programmatic decisions are made before the school year begins based on projected funding. So adjustments come after the fact, it can create unplanned budget pressures. Some of the key takeaways. Um, revenue growth remains positive, twenty-five, twenty-six revenue reached thirty-one point three million. An increase of one million over fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Continued growth indicates stable funding sources and effective fiscal management. Our expenditures hold steady, twenty-five, twenty-six expenditures totaled forty-six point seven million. Only modest increase from forty-six point one million the, the prior year. Spending trends reflect consistent operational costs and budget. Projected enrollment declines may reduce state aid allocations tied to hundred and thirty-five day student count data. Ongoing monitoring and proactive planning will be essential to maintain classroom support and staffing levels. The district remains financially stable with balanced revenue and expenditure trends. Strategic planning for enrollment impacts would be key to sustaining fiscal health moving forward. That is the end of my presentation, and I'll be here to answer any questions.
I, I, I do, and Bobby, you don't have to bear with me, I have about six questions here, okay? Um, you kind of, I didn't ask questions in the other presentations, cause I feel like your presentation kind of ties all of this together. Which is important, um, important to do, um. One of the things that you indicated is that we are, we project in twenty-four, twenty-five. For the number of students that we'll have in twenty-five, twenty-six, correct? And if that number is reduced in state aid, the classroom is reduced, correct?
Correct.
But we have already hired people, so let me back up. Our largest expenditure, people, correct?
That's correct.
That, that, when it's all said and done on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, our largest percentage will be people, correct?
That's right.
Alright, so, and we are hiring those people before July one. And we're hiring the people before the money comes in, based on our projection from the previous year.
Yes.
Alright, so that leads us to an interesting conversation, because if our state aid is going down. Is that what we are backfilling with earned interest?
That's, that's correct, it's, um, we, we're losing a, we're gonna lo- lose a billion dollars in state aid to classroom. But there are other line items that may make that up. So if interest rates go down, we might not have the line item that makes that up.
And, and this year, and I don't want to, you know, I know we had a, a tough budget year last year, there were a lot of conversations, and I don't. Necessarily wanna get us back down that road, but we have to be responsible here and stay as healthy as we are now. If our students are down, and even on your report, our interest earnings are down, and we are backfilling with interest earnings. Then, does that not put us in a position where we may have to have some real serious conversations about additional cuts?
Well, if, if you go, if our fund balance does go below, or gets to seventeen percent, then yes. Right now, we're not at that point luckily, but if, if we get down, there's no way, we, the revenues are not gonna get us back up above the seventeen percent.
And I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about the fund balance, the one-time expenditure for fund balance, I'm just talking about just natural arithmetic. Money is coming down, students are coming down, but we've hired on the front end, then, and we're backfilling with earned interest. Um, then, w- we.
Yeah, to maintain year over year.
Correct.
We have to, you know, really think about how we, how our student enrollment impacts our hiring. Um, right now, though, we are in a good position.
And maybe that's something that Dr. Elder would like to speak to as well?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, and Member Belton. Um, Mr. Burns, could you go back in the PowerPoint, uh, to Dr. Connor's presentation? Specifically, the slide that shows enrollment at each school. Okay, so, as you can see, we have, we have enrollment decreasing at many of our schools. But it's decreasing in small numbers. And so when you think about a decrease of enrollment of, let's say, twenty students. And let's say that's at a middle school that has three grades. So you might think it would be easy to then re- to reduce your teaching staff by one teacher, because twenty students ain't about one teacher. But when you take that across multiple grades, then you're looking at like six kids. Seven, seven kids per grade level, so it becomes much more complicated to make those projections and make those adjustments. When you have, you have a number of students spread across multiple grades.
Yeah, I under- I understand that, but we still, we, we still, in the aggregate. We are down four hundred plus students until Mr. Knowles's point, that means we're getting a million less dollars. And even when we start talking about our footprint, that means we need viewers, you need fewer staff, cause you still, or, cause we don't have the staffing. Does our footprint need to be as large as our footprint currently is? Because at the end of the day, even though I recognize that it's broken up over twenty-something, um, locations. In the aggregate, it's still four hundred and thirty whatever students, and it's still a small elementary school that we're down. And if we keep losing at the rate of a small elementary school each year, that is not sustainable. To continue to operate, the footprint we're operating, because we don't have the revenue coming in that we once had coming in. To sustain where we are, that, that's the only point I'm making.
What I will say too about the revenue though, it's not a guarantee, even if we lose four hundred students, that state aid to classrooms will go down. Because the state is gonna have to make sure that the districts are getting the minimum teacher salary scale. So they may increase the, 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 the ratio amount, but that still means we're, we're not getting as much as we could.
Right, but doesn't that create, and I, I'm done with my questions and give it to someone else. But doesn't that create more of a challenge, because each year with the step increase and all that?
Right.
That creates more of a financial challenge.
Correct.
Alright.
So I think Dr. Belton is bringing up some really, really valid points that brings me to my request. I think knowing that we have, um, you, you know, the initial reports of the forty-five day enrollment. Um, I think it would be pertinent for this board to get an update when we have updated numbers that has been confirmed in November. Even though it may not be through a formal presentation, if we can at least get the confirmation numbers so that we have an idea of what that looks like. And depending on the conversations, um, let's call them exit interviews, because that's sort of what I heard. The, the scope of what you and your team were working on, as those are, if, if that's the. The plan, so to speak, I think it is vital for this board to get an update as to what the results of those. Exit interviews or surveys or whatever it may be is, so that we can, to Dr. Belton's point. Plan accordingly as we go into next season. Um, and in addition to that, um, um, I just wanna say thank you for this presentation. I think it is very clear for both us and for the public to see the line items, to see the comparison between different years. Um, I think that is a phenomenal thing for both the community and for this board. Um, and I'm really looking forward to seeing another one, uh, in a couple of months, right, in January, right? Yeah, so did you have something?
Oh, I did, I, I think when we're looking at the forty-five day numbers, I think when we're, we're talking about, um, our declining enrollment. I personally am encouraged that we've made measures like dual enrollment. That we've done with the partnership with Winthrop, the partnerships with York Tech. I think that we're turning a direction, in a direction where we're making ourselves more competitive. In a sense that we can compete against the children that are leaving, the families that are leaving for whatever reason. And we, you know, could do more of a deep dive into that to really discover what's going on. But I think that as we continue to provide more offerings to kids in York County. Will have more families be attracted to Rock Hill Schools, so it may not look as bleak and as dismal. But I do hear what Dr. Belton is saying about concern about where our money is going, but I also think that if you offer a good product, families will come. And I think we are offering good products, so I just wanted to say that, thank you to everyone who's investing. Into ensuring that we have in those offerings to our kids. Thank you, uh, to, uh, Mr. Burns and, and Ms. Miller, your work in doing adult enrollment. I think that's a, that's a huge deal for our school district, and I think that we can see some numbers turn around in the coming years.
Chris Daniel, and then followed by Mr. Years.
I just wanna say thank you for putting these two presentations together tonight to give us a whole picture. It's much easier to have the discussion when we see all the information at once. Um, as Helena said, um, having updates going forward would be appreciated, and what I would like to add to that. Is, um, as we're finding out why students are leaving. I would also like to hear what the discussion is about how we are going to attract students or what we are doing to market Rock Hill Schools and all of our options. Um, we continue to approve options, we have choice schools, what are we doing to reach those families that are out there in our zones? I would like to hear the plus side of the conversation. Um, and then it did make me wonder on the, um, when Pete was talking. Do we look at, or does the district look at the housing market and real estate? Do we lay that over top of our attendance zones to see what those members look? I assume it happened, but I don't also wanna assume anything, so I'd like to hear that discussion and just, it's obviously a multi-layered thing. it's obviously a multi-layered thing. We're losing students, we need to know how to gain students, we need to know why they're leaving and then also, um, how to project our future, future staffing and, um, budget numbers. Thank you.
Mr. Pencil?
Thank you for putting this together, Bobby. Um, it's very helpful, it's very transparent. I'm looking forward to getting this once a quarter so that we are kept up to date and the, and the public is also kept up to date. Along the lines of what we, we were all kind of talking about, the academics that Rock Hill Schools offers is unparalleled. It, it is, is top-notch. And adding dual enrollment, adding the, all of the academic off, offerings that we have is just, it, they're incredible. And what I, I really want us to focus on is uniform discipline throughout the schools and that's kind of what I was, should have been more blunt about, is working at some schools but not others. And, and that is a problem that parents see and that is, it's the discipline, the way disciplines enforced at our three high schools are all different. So I think the sooner we can get that rolled, rolled out and uniform, the better. The other thing is our programs. We have awesome academic programs, but let's fully fund our arts programs and let's have feeder programs so that every middle school has an orchestra. Every orchestra has a band that feeds into these schools, into the high schools so that all of these kids have the opportunity to participate in the arts and let's fully fund their athletic programs so that we keep our kids here and so that the families look around and say, this is, Rock Hill Schools is the best possible place for my kids because of the programs and because of the academics. And we can do it if we prioritize that come budget season this year and I hope that we will.
So.
I would just like to second Pete, um, your passion for not only the athletics but for our fine arts. I know the difference that it's made, um, in my life and especially my children's lives, so you have my commitment when it comes to that time to really pour into those professionals that, um, really make a difference in our children's lives. Not to negate the sports, I've had, uh, my kids involved with them, but I, I think oftentimes, um, the fine arts takes a backseat to athletics and they're just equally as impactful of our, of our children. So I work, I look forward to working with you on that.
I can only third that. I do have one question regarding, uh, the slide that Dr. Connor was showing, the pie chart, right? So one of the things we saw there, you, you don't, it's okay. Almost half of that number is coming from people who are transferring to other public school districts, which seems to indicate that they're leaving Rock Hill attendance, right? I wonder if we can get some data from both the city and the county to show what the migration patterns look like for families because I know that we all here in the community that, you know, the cost of living in Rock Hill is exponentially higher than it used to be a few years ago. And I'm wondering if some of those things are impacting those numbers, uh, but that is just an assumption. Uh, we can obviously focus on the other side of the pie chart, which is people who still reside in Rock Hill. But I think it is important for us to see what is happening with the community as a whole and why are people leaving, people with school-based children, I should say, leaving the community? Um, and where are they going and why? And are there things that we can do to, to help, um, as individuals or as, as a board, as a whole, in those endeavors? So if, I, I think that would be a logical next step to have those conversations with, um, the housing departments at those two entities, just to sort of cross-reference the other.
Can I, can I just say something very quickly and, and I do agree, um, Bobby, thank you so much for this presentation. And when, when we talked upstairs early or late last week, tell you, I, I thought this was phenomenal. And the first time, and since I've been on the board for, Mr. Burns has reminded me for one year now, um, first time I've seen it like this, so thank you so much for that and your presentation was phenomenal. And I just want to remind my colleagues here that my concern is not necessarily about today, it's two or three days from now. Because our district has made a commitment to dual enrollment in those things, if we continue to lose a million dollars a year, then we're going to have to make decisions. And if our commitment is going to be dual enrollment, we're going to create haves and have-nots because the children who are in dual enrollment, their parents will be able to supplement it and it will not be available for those kids whose parents cannot financially supplement it because we're going to have to make tough decisions. And where will those tough decisions come from? Dual enrollment and all the things that are extras. So my question in here today is truly about if we're making a commitment to those programs and we're going to have to make sure that they are available to all the children in Rock Hill Schools, the haves and the have-nots. And if we don't plug this gap where we're losing four hundred kids a year, where we're losing a billion dollars a year, then we're not going to be able to sustain dual enrollment financially. Parents will have to supplement it, whose parents will, whose kids will be in dual enrollment? Our kids. Whose kids won't be the kids who lived out in the district that I represent.
Dr. Belton, or just for clarification, the dual enrollment program at York Tech and at USCL, that's actually funded by? State, the state. So the one, the program that you're referring to is Winthrop.
Correct.
So we would still have the ability to have students at York Tech and at USCL that would be able to go and benefit.
But we just said last, we, we don't provide transportation to the ones at USCL.
Well, that's a conversation, I mean, in past, but that's a conversation that we probably need to have in the budget, but I think we still have options, we're working with York Tech, we now have options for USCL. We still have those options for every child in the district, not just some.
I just think that it is important that we keep getting these continuous updates so that we have all the information at hand in those processes, uh, come budget season. You, you, you know, and again, I, I think, yeah, I hear it loud and clear from the entire board that the format of this presentation is incredibly transparent and very informative and we do appreciate that tremendously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up would be the comprehensive behavior and student support model and I'm going to welcome, uh, Dr. Connor.
Yeah, thank you once again, uh, Martin Connor, Assistant Superintendent for Strategic Development. I'm here with Mr. Frank Palermo, Director of Behavioral Services. I wanted to provide before he comes up and speak about the presentation this, this evening, uh, how do we get here regarding this information to be shared tonight? Uh, give a background, knowledge of what happened with this and how we got to this point and certainly, uh, very important and passionate, uh, topic for us. Uh, back in April when we were working toward the reorg, um, our division, School and Student Development, before we got started to work, thought it was appropriate to look at the alignment of our resources, uh, being clear and consistent on roles and responsibilities. Uh, this division has a number of student support services in it, which includes mental health, counseling, BMAs, deans, APs, mental health services, all the things that would align to provide student support and behavioral support for students in our schools. So the conversation was birthed, uh, with the persons who primarily lead those, uh, entities, which is myself, uh, Mr. Palermo and also Dr. Smith. We started with the conversation back in May, uh, to think forward about what the work looked like, looked like uh, in July and August and even now. And so we thought it best to do some research on where are we as a district with our resources and our interventions, uh, primarily dealing with our discipline, uh, how we identify a clear and concise metrics for all of our elementary, middle and high schools. And so we led it to a point where, uh, with some preliminary research on creating a model uh, that would identify primarily five elements to a comprehensive, uh, behavior student support plan. So we had our first meeting, uh, in August and led to a meeting, uh, in September and throughout the entire year where we created an advisory committee. The main goal of this is really threefold. The first thing is, is what I think you mentioned earlier is to identify how we're clear and consistent on executing discipline in our schools, that we can, uh, understand what expectations are from classroom to when consequences occur. Number two, before we get there, to ensure that we have clear and concise interventions with resources and support to curtail behavior. We want kids to be in school and so our goal, like, look, it's absolutely all is to be in school. And then lastly, is to be very clear on the resources for teachers, our admin leaders that lead the schools in all these areas. And so with that being said, uh, is going to come up this evening, share, uh, where we are historically, share what we've done so far and then next, let's move forward.
Chairman Miller, Vice Chair Hodgson, Dr. Elder, member of the board, members of the board. I'm Frank Palermo, Director of Behavior Supports. Thank you, Dr. Connor, for giving us the historical information of the origins of the comprehensive behavior and student support model. I'll start by sharing the purpose. First, to ensure a clear, consistent, transparent discipline matrix aligned with the district's code of conduct. Second, enhance school and classroom management across the district. Third, provide effective student interventions and support to reinforce, modify or change behavior. Fourth, promote and recognize positive behavior. Fifth, engage parents and community. This model will be partially implemented, um, January twenty-twenty-six with full implementation at the beginning of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Based on several research-based models, we've identified five core elements of the comprehensive behavior and student support model. School and classroom management, student interventions, positive behavior supports, parent and community engagement and the discipline matrix. In August, we created an advisory committee consisting of thirty-five members from Rock Hill School District and the community. The purpose of the committee is to collaborate and provide feedback and recommendations to assist in the design of the model. The model cons, I'm sorry, the committee consists of district administrators, principals, assistant principals, classroom teachers, other district staff like BMAs and deans, parents, guardians, student representatives, community stakeholders and school board members. This team has been meeting since August and focused on reviewing student data, research best practices, identified behavior intervention supports and provides recommendations and strategies that will be included in the plan. Here are the subcommittees that were established from the advisory committee. The first, the discipline matrix. They are tasked to establish a consistent high school discipline framework while also reviewing the elementary and middle school matrix that will be implemented in January twenty-twenty-six. Second, school and classroom management. The committee that will work to set clear district-wide management guidelines for all classrooms. Third, student interventions. Ensure consistent tiered behavior supports to minimize disruptions and support all students. This is how we provide high-quality interventions to change and modify behavior. Fourth, positive behavior support. This is how we are rewarding our students doing well in our schools. Fifth, family and community engagement. This is how we communicate expectations and involving parents in supporting their students and develop community partnerships to align with school-wide behavior goals. These outcomes will be aligned with our district code of conduct and how consequences are applied to behaviors and to ensure there's clarity and consistency of how behavior consequences are applied across all of our schools. Up next, I'd like to, um, give an update of what we've accomplished in the first two meetings. At our August meeting, we've conducted a strength, weakness, opportunities and threat analysis of district discipline data, code of conduct, student interventions and positive behavior practices. Our findings were highlighting many effective efforts in, uh, with opportunities to improve inconsistency across schools and the district. At our September meeting, we developed initial framework for the five core elements, giving recommendations for guidelines and procedures to positively impact behaviors in school. Next, I'll share our future steps for the advisory committee. We have a clear timeline for October through November. First, we'll assess our current practices and develop the high school discipline matrix. We'll review and revise the current discipline matrix, matrices for elementary and middle schools. This will be completed by the end of November. In January, we'll be training all stakeholders on the discipline matrix. We'll implement clear, consistent and transparent high school student discipline, the high school discipline matrix. Here, we'll be spending time with administrators on how to implement the new discipline matrix and revise elementary, middle school, elementary and middle school matrix to provide clarity on applying consequences. By the end of May, we'll ensure all stakeholders have a copy of the plan and we'll review in principal and level meetings in preparation for the next school year. As we move into the summer, focus will be on implementation for the next year. We'll collaborate with district and depart, uh, with district departments and stakeholders for deployment of the model and we'll provide professional development and training to school leaders and all stakeholders for implementation. Thank you so much. At this time, you guys have any questions?
Mr. Burns?
Uh, just curious, what happens when a part of your team, say administrator or teacher, doesn't follow your matrix and they maybe say they change the code and fighting in a horseplay?
Sure, so, I mean, initially, we're going to be doing a, a lot of training upfront and we'll be doing some progress monitoring to basically assess and see, you know, where, where's working, you know, what's working, where do we need to refine it?
Now, now, what happens when someone deliberately doesn't follow your matrix?
When someone doesn't, when someone.
Someone doesn't follow your matrix, what, you worked hard on this, when someone does not blatantly doesn't follow the matrix, what happens?
Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Burns, I think it's probably a three-fold question. One, you know, this matrix is identified for how principals employ discipline in schools and so there are three different levels of that. At first, we follow the policy, the code of conduct. There are three tiers of that in our policy that we're, that we write. And so our job is to align what the consequences may be. So for example, if you have someone fighting in school, you have a first offense in the matrix that you will give three to five days, uh, of, of OSS. And so it's the expectation that that's followed. If it's not, certainly if there's an AP that is dealing with that particular consequence and not followed by that assistant principal, it's up to that supervisor, which is the principal. Uh, if it's a principal who's not following the metrics and, you know, those things are not followed very clearly, that's my role is I supervise the principals to follow back up and progress on those individuals who not follow the metrics accordingly.
Thank you.
Any other que, questions or comments? I see Ms. Daniel.
I do, I just have a comment, um, as a practitioner and as a parent. Can we, I guess my ask is as you produce this, can we make sure that it does not wrap teachers or administrators up in paperwork or the process and that interventions? There is a time to intervene and there are ages that are developmentally appropriate to teach the skills necessary to operate within the classroom. But our students' job is to be in the classroom to work. Anyone preventing the learning or teacher from teaching needs to be addressed. Um, and I understand that's why you're creating that matrix, but I also want to make sure we're not wrapping it up in a paperwork process that slows down and prevents the others from learning and the teachers doing their jobs.
Dr. Connor, were the, it's had other stakeholders out there, were school resource officers involved in this?
Yes, matter of fact, we had two, uh, resource officers involved. One was the community resource officer for, uh, the, uh, city and also one high school SOA was involved as well.
Alright, so was there any conversations in any of these meetings regarding when they arrest versus when they don't arrest? And, 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 and it is a loaded question, I'm, I, I'll let you answer it and I'll.
Yeah, so their question always asked, you know, I can't recall any specific question that was asked in that regard, but certainly at the school, uh, leader, you know, the, when it comes to a criminal offense in a school, uh, the police officers have the first call of order for what happens with that. So we take a secondary seat when we have a situation where it could be potentially a criminal, uh, offense that have, has occurred. We follow those actions according to the officer. Uh, I don't recall, uh, right offhand, there was some conversation around that piece, but certainly, uh, if there is a criminal, um, but certainly, if there is a criminal offense, then the resource officer takes that, those investigation, lead those, and we follow those as school leaders.
And let me just say this, and this is my personal opinion, but it's based on my professional observation. The pipeline to prison is real, it's very real. And using our school as a vehicle to put kids unnecessarily in the criminal justice system is a concern of mine. And I do believe that we as educators, board members, you all as staff members, practitioners, have a voice in that. So I'm glad that SROs were at the table. I do think there's a difference between middle school kids pushing and shoving each other out on the basketball court and high school students that are straight out brawling to school. But it seems like both of them are being charged criminally, even in Rock Hill schools. And I can tell you from my professional experience, and there's hard data to prove it, that the positions that we're taking over here in terms of how we're charging kids, because I end up representing some of those children in all the school districts here locally, that we are taking a very different position here. So I'm glad to know that school resource officers are at the table. And I hope that there are some serious conversations. And we've talked about tonight about partnerships, that there's a partnership in what do we arrest and what we don't arrest, and that there's a partnership and conversation between the schools and law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, and so I just, so the plan is to roll out the new matrix January for second semester in the high schools?
Yes, it is.
Well then, we say thank you to Mr. Palermo and for great presentation. I am appreciative that there is an effort to make sure that we have the same accountability measurements across the board so that what is expected from a student at one school is the same across the district at the same level. So I look forward to that. And I think, you know, maybe a month or two after implementation, it would probably be nice for us to get an update with some feedback to see how it has gone. So with that, we say thank you.
Madam Chair, quick question. This matrix, does it require any changing of the current board policies? Or board policies are in place in the matrix, would just fit into what we already have?
Yeah, great question. We're currently reviewing the board policies. Most already have the content in there that we can create a matrix. Again, the board policy identifies different levels of consequence, level one to level three, if you will. So with that said, we are aligning what those policies are to the metrics. The middle school and elementary already has that, and so we'll be running the iteration of the first draft through the principals and other stakeholders. But myself, Mr. Palermo, and also Dr. Smith, who kind of owns the vetting of that, will run that through to make sure that we don't have to modify any policy. If you do, we'll bring that to your attention. But right now, it's a period that will be the case of all.
Thank you, to bother you. Moving on to the next item, which is the report of the superintendent, Dr. Elder.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm pleased to provide you with a complete report, this time fully aligned to all five areas from the community-driven superintendent change priorities in the ZIO report that went out to all candidates for the job that I have the privilege now to hold. So first, in student achievement, our staff roundtable series is well underway. I've visited sixteen schools so far. Great responses from educators on how we can improve our system, things that we can do better, things that we need to maybe consider stop doing. They have fantastic ideas and appreciate the opportunity to share them one-on-one and directly. And so that has gone very well, and we will continue until we are all done. I'd like to shout out to the communications team who come with me to every single one. They take copias notes because we are getting great input. I want to remember all of it as I put it all together to report back to you. And so they're tremendous support, both for me as well as for our staff. And our community engagement, I've spent a great deal of time in the community, partially. Part of that has been supporting the arts. I attended the Old English Festival of Bands three times, so I can see all three of our schools perform. Enjoyed that tremendously. I also attended last Friday night, the Wizard of Oz performance at Rock Hill High School. Additionally, we continue hosting parent roundtables. Last one was at Emmensky Recreation Center and Castle Heights Middle School. And so thank everyone who came to those as well. The next one will be a virtual session on Thursday, October 30th. And then we will also have a community forum on a Saturday. This is new, that will be November 8th at 10:00 a.m. at Knowledge Perk. Then that way, everybody who didn't get to come to a Thursday evening has an opportunity to come and share their ideas. Additionally, I attended the NWA CP monthly meeting and had a roundtable with them, had great suggestions from the community, and attended the community event at Adult Education and Parents Smart last week. Under mental health and safety, of course, we take safety very seriously. We hosted an emergency preparedness session for district leaders in October. It was hosted by FEMA. So we went through the whole FEMA emergency response training and left with a clear understanding with all of our district leaders who attended and school leaders who attended of our role in emergency management, both in communication and in immediate response. We'll continue to build on that capacity building as we continue to expand our safety efforts. Under accountability and strong leadership, I had the opportunity to speak at the York County Regional Chamber's seat at the table event. Additionally, I attended the Rock Hill City Council so I could introduce myself to our city councilors and participated in the mayor's key influencers breakfast. Accountability and strong leadership also spills over into managing the budget. So of course, investing time in creating the fantastic work that Mr. Barnes gave us this evening. In our first quarterly financial report, we will continue that in order to increase transparency throughout the year so the budget doesn't just come and get discussed once a year. We want to be able to continue to discuss all year long. So thank you for your input and your feedback on this presentation. The next one will be in January for quarter two. Additionally, I participated in SCASA. They had a special session for new superintendents specifically around South Carolina school finance. And so as you know, not being from South Carolina, every state finances schools very differently. So it was a great opportunity for me to learn school finance in my new state. And with that, our next board meeting is scheduled for November 11th at 6:00 p.m. And of course, will be livestreamed for public viewing. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Next up is an executive session. We do have one item to consider, which is a student matter and transfer request appeal. So at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the open session and adjourn the executive session for that matter. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Hodgson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Harris. Any discussion? Very well, all those are better. All the papers, motion carries, send us here.
Good evening and welcome back to the business meeting of the Rock Hill School District. We have been meeting in executive session for the purpose of a student matter transfer request appeal. Before I ask for any motions, I will state that Board Member Melissa Harris has recused herself due to a conflict of interest. So with that, are there any motions coming out of the -- actually, before we do that, I need to entertain a motion to adjourn the executive session and reconvene the open session first. Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Nozel. Any discussion? Bearing none. All those in favor? All opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Now, are there any motions coming out of the executive session?
Madam Chair of motion?
Sir?
I move that we agree to the amended appeal and allow the student to, with the superintendent's permission, to enroll and aspire immediately to finish the semester and then have a review by Student Services as to the student's performance and/or ability to remain at Aspire for the rest of the year.
Okay. Do I have a second to that? Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Any discussion? Bearing none. All those in favor? All opposed. Motion carries six zero with one recusal. Other and future business, we will be communicating out information regarding the proposed November 11th work session in the coming days. We will be meeting to set the agenda probably sometime this week and will notify everyone if this is small group material here for the coming weeks. And I will reach out to all of you regarding updates as far as getting more information from the parties for Project Sample. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn unless somebody has anything else. Nope? from the parties for Project Sample. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn unless somebody has anything else. Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Any discussion? Bearing none. All those in favor? All opposed. Motion carries seven zero.